improvements at the stadium. Um, that relates to roofing and HVAC issues and seating. So we are asking for its passage.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended and the committee's report is favorable. Roll call.
Baylor.
Aye.
Connor.
Aye.
Fusco.
Aye.
Camer.
Aye.
Lombardo.
Aye.
McKittrick.
Aye.
Malik.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Imobian.
Aye.
Samples.
Aye.
Somerville.
Aye.
This ordinance passes eleven to zero. Item number three offered by Connor. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept and expend grant funding from the Environmental Protection Protection Agency for the creation of a conservation easement and to preserve wetlands located in the Burton Wetlands Complex, authorizing the mayor or his designee to enter into an agreement or agreements with a contractor or consultant for services related to the conservation and preservation of the wetlands, subject to the conservation easement and declaring an emergency.
Councilwoman Connor.
We'd like this placed on the consent agenda, please.
Thank you. This item will be placed on the consent agenda.
Item number four offered by Councilman Fusco. Resolution celebrating the fifty-third anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act and declaring an emergency.
Councilman Fusco.
Yes, thank you. The report of the committee is favorable and we're asking for suspension of the rules.
Any objections on suspension of the rules? Seeing and hearing them, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, thank you. April is Fair Housing Month. Um, Jamie McMillan from the Board of Realtors showed up today at the Housing and Neighborhood Assistance Committee today, weighed in on this particular resolution, as well as Angela Smith from our Fair Housing. And both provided input on this. Obviously, this is asking the community to recognize the fifty-third year, the Fair Housing Act, and all that went into leading up to this point. The discrimination, the redlining, just so much history. We can't forget that history. And moving forward, we've got to continue to carry this message that this is not tolerated in today's society. So with that, we're asking for passage this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended and the committee's report is favorable. Roll call.
Baylor.
Aye.
Connor.
Aye.
Fusco.
Aye.
Camer.
Aye.
Lombardo.
Aye.
McKittrick.
Aye.
Malik.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Imobian.
Aye.
Samples.
Aye.
Somerville.
Aye.
This resolution passes eleven to zero.
That concludes our new legislation for this evening. We will now go to the portion of our meeting that we refer to as our public comment period, and our clerk will play in comments received for this evening.
Hi, my name is Teresa Williams. Phone number three, three, zero, nine, five, seven, five, four, two, five. I'm calling to speak to the council of Akron, Ohio, and whomever else that will listen. Our black men have been getting killed from the Akron Police Department since the nineties, early nineties. It has been a total of nine deaths. We don't know how many beatings in, 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 of the ones that lived through. My child was beaten. He got stopped for a left-hand signal, but not put on a left-hand signal turn. There is no way that he should have been surrounded by the FBI, the DEA, the Akron Police Department, and a snog unit. There was a total of maybe forty to fifty Caucasian cops, officers, and not one black. I'm going to fight for justice. And hopefully you'll fight for justice with me because it's not fair. Slavery is over with. We need help with this, and it must stop. I'm ashamed of the council because I came to them, the mayor, everyone, and everybody's shoving it under the rug. My son got beat the day after the Capitol riot, which was January sixth. He got beat, stomped, kicked, smacked, leg-shutting the door, dragged, skin off his face. And at the very end, they said they should have shot him. We have witnesses, statements, signs, notarized, and the law is they must have their body cams on when they exit their cars. Why are they telling me they don't have body cams of that day? And not just that, my son told me when he was being beaten, one of the cops said, "Man, your body cam, your body cam, your body cam," and he cut it off. Something must be done, and it has to be done quick. It's not fair. Slavery is over with. Just because someone get in trouble or do something wrong or wrong left-hand signal does not give it.
I am Raymond Green, G R E E N E, senior. I live at two sixty-three South Main Street, Suite Number Five Oh Six, the Mayflower Manor Apartments in Akron. We have no hot water, and we've been without hot water since running water since last year. Seems to be no resolve to this. The excuse when it was first filed is that they're doing remodeling. So there's been no hot water for a whole year, maybe longer than that. So please contact me, three, three, zero, eight, three, four, five, four, seven, eight. Thank you.
Hello, this is Casey Weinstein. I live at eight Northwest Haven Drive in Hudson, Ohio, and I serve as the state representative for Ohio's thirty-seventh House District. Although I live in Hudson, I represent significant portions of the Woodridge Local School District, which draws students from Peninsula, Cuyahoga Falls, and Akron's Merriman Valley neighborhood. On behalf of my constituents living in the Woodridge Local School District, I urge Akron City Council to reject residential development proposals for these roads. While I fully understand Akron's need for economic development, I cannot support the continued utilization of residential abatements in the Merriman Valley. New homes bring new families, and new families bring new children. In the These Wood property proposal, these children would be students in Woodridge Local Schools, not Akron City Schools. Because of Akron's residential abatement program, parents living in the These Wood proposal would send their students to Woodridge Schools without contributing a penny to the cost of their children's public education. That is fundamentally unfair. Taxpayers living in Peninsula, Cuyahoga Falls, and unabated properties within Akron's Merriman Valley should not have to cover the costs of educating newcomers to Woodridge Local Schools for the next fifteen years. Woodridge Local Schools already struggles with inadequate state funding that taxpayers have had to supplement with repeated emergency operating levy campaigns. The COVID-nineteen pandemic further exacerbated these financial issues. In fiscal year 2020, state funding for Woodridge Local Schools was reduced by twenty-six point two-five percent per people. For comparison, the average cut to per people funding was a meager three point seven-two percent. For these reasons, I respectfully urge Akron City Council to reject residential development proposals for these roads and support its conservation instead. Should Akron City Council proceed with the proposal, I encourage council members to work with the Woodridge Board of Education to ensure a fair system of compensation for the duration of the abatement. In the meantime, I will continue my work on legislation that would guarantee a system of checks and balances by changing the way we treat residential abatements to create uniformity with the system currently in place for both commercial and industrial abatements. Thank you very much.
John Wesley Sharp, attorney and counselor at law, seven thirty Calis Drive, Suite Twelve Oh One. If you get a pin, I will give you my phone number. I am also chairman of the Coalition for a Safe Community. We fight discrimination. May the words in my mouth and the meditations of my heart be acceptable in thy sight, O Lord, my strength and my redeemer. As I've said before, racism runs deep to the marrow, to the bone. They know what they are doing, and they like it. No training or police community meetings are going to work. They will only do what they are forced to do. What we have to do, march, demonstrate, petition, confront, visit, call, write. The chief of police, the mayor, city council, the prosecutor, the judge, and the jail. You should teach your children to say, "That's not fair." Teach your children to say, "You're not treating us the same. Why are you discriminating against us?" Support Black Lives Matter. You can reach me at three, three, zero, seven, seven, three, four, five, eight, six. Call me at three, three, zero, seven, seven, three, four, five, eight, six. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm a retired firefighter from the city of Cleveland, and I just seen the video about the firefighter turning the hose, excuse me, on someone that's videotaping them, calling it a crime scene. He committed the crime. He has no right and no situation to turn a hose on anyone. His job is to do whatever he's there to do, get back on that truck, get back to the station, and be ready for the next call.
Hi, my name is Jill Butera. I live at thirty thirty Little Dale Road in Akron, and I just want to say that I do not believe that any action should be taken against the firemen. I think a verbal warning would suffice. Was it the best decision to spray the Ryan Ohio protest guy? No, but he doesn't deserve anything else than, hey, don't do that again. Um, I believe they're making a mountain out of a molehill on this. So, uh, thank you for the firemen's service, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
My name, as a sign, is Mariah, that I tell to myself. I am a houseless person living in Akron, in Ants, in Revanam, in Streetsboro. I'm houseless all over the place, so don't be trying to check my location. Houseless people be living all over the place, but we trying to check address. How rude, how disrespectful. Literally, y'all are rude. You're rude to houseless people. Houseless people have a right to exist, and as a polyamorous person, um, I literally have a right to register both of my boyfriends and my girlfriends' names on the birth certificate when we be giving birth to our baby. So literally, y'all need to recognize polyamorous relationships. Legally, like other cities are doing. And y'all need to end these homeless, houseless groups. You need to defund the police and fund housing for all. The colonial hierarchy is disgusting, and the colonizers, you know who you are. Colonized people are tired. Colonized people of color are specifically tired. I am a colonized person of color. I am Native American, I'm African, and reparations are due. Reparations been due with interest. Um, and some exemplarizations, actually, no, a lot of exemplarizations need to come out of the police budget. And I do not care if there are colonized men and women of color on the force, the slave patrol force, the enslavement patrol force. Um, by the way, happy woman heritage month, happy Irish heritage month, happy disability month. And y'all need to respect bicycle riders. Bicycle riders have the right to use the full moon. And not just in Akron, but in all the cities that connect to it. And you know your neighboring cities, how they disrespect bicycle riders. Akron, it's time for lower that voting age to twelve. Lower it to twelve, there should be no voting age at all. There's a great book, Children's Voices in Politics by Michael Cummins. A proud National Youth Rights Association member, as am I. I'm also a proud National Youth Rights Association member. Y'all didn't plan my comment last week. Rude, rude. Like, you did not deny this. I commented on the YouTube video. I am real. And even if I was artificial intelligence, guess what? Alex, Xander. Hello? Can I review my message? In love?
Hello, my name is Ryan Keane. I'm a member of About Face Fairness Against the War and Serve the People Akron. I was born in Akron, and I'm a longtime resident of Ward Ten. Um, so I am looking forward to Councilwoman Samples' response from March eighth, when she inquired about, um, the follow-up for answers on the illegal encampment sweep behind Grace Park. Um, I know that as of last week, the twenty-second, she reached out and informed me that the answers she has never received from the mayor's office yet. So I think the community is looking forward to hearing Councilwoman Samples and the mayor and any other council people who care about the houseless response. First, I want to quote Mayor Horgan on March twenty-second. "These things are unacceptable." And I said today, everyone is a person. No matter where you come from, you bleed, you cry, you laugh, you want to do better for your family. It's about treating people with a basic amount of respect. We as a society fail at protecting the most vulnerable. So in closing, I would like to say that, um, just like the mayor and some council people who refuse to communicate directly with oppressed and vulnerable populations without PR campaigns and photo ops and show some compassion as public servants, I don't know if the fire chief and fire department or the police will ever change. I hope for immediate First Amendment training for all first responders in Akron. How many times will we hear empty words from the politicians and chiefs about how it does not reflect the city or the department? This systemic culture of complete disregard for humanity and empathy is a result of leadership. Since nineteen eighty-seven, Akron has had two mayors, Mayor Pescualik and Mayor Horgan. Vice President Fusco has been in office since nineteen eighty-seven. Between President Somerville and Mr. Somerville, they have been in office since nineteen eighty-seven. You talk about reimagining public safety in your PR campaigns as if it is a big way to pat yourself on the back. Why is it taking you thirty-four years to address the oppression that goes on within the community? And why, after thirty-four years, have you brought the same faces to the table? I hope to hear, um, more about your update on the houseless population, Councilwoman Samples. Um, I hope city of Akron first responders will understand First Amendment rights. Um, the Devil's Strip article, why aren't we included? Um, mentioned it perfectly about not bringing new faces to the table. It's systemic, just like everything else. Thank you, and good day.
Hi, city council members. Good evening. Um, my name is Nick, Ward One. Um, this isn't written out, so just bear with me. Um, so my first point is I'm still a little concerned that it's been several months now, and Ward One, um, really doesn't have much representation on council, aside from being extremely undemocratic and having almost zero say in the recent passing of, um, twenty-twenty-one budget, which is arguably the biggest piece of legislation you all, um, work on and talk about and vote on. Um, it's just very disheartening that, um, we've had zero representation for a while now, and I hope Rich Swirsky, um, is doing well in his treatment, um, and that he's getting better. But in the meantime, I really would like to know what council plans do, um, about, you know, representation for, you know, thousands of Akronites. Um, furthermore, I'm a member of Serve the People Akron. Um, we're really disheartened that, uh, we're the only folks out here really doing work for these houseless people, and the city of Akron, um, gives basically pennies to these folks. Um, the budget is for houseless outreach is extremely small, um, and all we're asking is for dumpsters and regular trash pickups at, um, these house encampments that you all should absolutely sanction, um, instead of evicting and traumatizing routinely. Um, additionally, um, I know the city of Akron is slated to get like one hundred and fifty-three million dollars for COVID relief. Um, I recently heard that the mayor planned to spend a sizable portion of this on combating gun violence. Um, and I just think honestly it's disgusting that we would, uh, put even a penny of that COVID relief, um, into the Akron Police Department or into any system like that. Um, folks are impoverished, folks have, um, been evicted. Um, Akron has the highest eviction rate in all of Ohio and is currently evicting at least a hundred people per week. Um, perhaps instead of, uh, putting more money into the police department budget, we can deal with houselessness and housing insecurity, we can provide some rent relief, um, we can provide some mental health, uh, for people, we can, you know, provide education and resources to folks instead of just, you know, locking them up and policing them more. Um, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the city, and I would really hate to see this money go to waste. Um, my last point is again on the, um, tax abatement for the city of Akron. Um, it's extremely discriminatory, um, it's reminiscent of redlining. Um, Cincinnati has had a, almost the exact same tax abatement for almost seven, or eleven years now, a little longer than Akron, um, and they're currently being sued in a class action lawsuit.
I'm Bill Nesbitt, uh, three, three, oh, three, seven, nine, two, two, three, five, and one, one, five, five, down the road. First of all, I'll have a great spring two thousand twenty-one, holy week, Easter season, and consider and really pursue into having a mailbox drop-off on our original high-station so that those who were, when walking, just as of making their immediate payment, were able to do that, and those who were in that one-hour bus ride can do that. It'd be a great service for our society, even though the virus situation is possibly is improving. But, you know, people, that, again, thanks for the service all you're doing. And once again, everybody, be great. Holy week, Easter Sunday, Easter spring season for two thousand twenty-one.
That concludes our public comments for this evening. Again, all comments have been forwarded to the appropriate departments and also CC to the appropriate, uh, council persons as well. Um, at this time, we'll go into our committee assignments, rules. Councilman Fusco.
Subject call.
Public safety, Councilman Camer.
Two fifteen.
Budget and finance, Councilwoman Imobian.
Three P M.
Parks and Rec, Councilman Neil.
Four forty-five.
Planning and economic development, Councilman Fusco.
One.
Housing and neighborhood assistance, Councilman Fusco.
Subject two, call.
Public service, Councilwoman Samples.
Two P M.
Health and social services, Councilwoman Imobian.
Two thirty.
Public utilities and green committee, Councilwoman Connor.
Two forty-five.
Thank you. So now we'll see if there's anything else coming before council. I do see Councilwoman Samples.
Um, thank you, Madam President. Um, a few things. Um, I appreciate Mr. Keane, um, being diligent, um, about his concerns, um, from the, for the houseless down at the CX, um, XX Railroad. Um, I do, um, want Mr. Keane to know that I have, um, put in a call and a text to him to let him know that. Um, the administration did get back to me with his concerns and explained, um, in detail, you know, what had happened, and it didn't come from the city. I have forwarded that to Mr. Keane, but I think my biggest concern with it is the railroad sent over something in February, and, uh, we're just fine about it, out about it in March. So I think that not just in my ward, but in any of our wards, when we have something such a hot issue or hot topic or something like this happens, I would like a heads up so I know how to deal with it with my residents. Um, it completely blindsided me, and I know Mr. Keane lives in, um, Councilwoman Connor's ward, so she's getting emails as well. So then it gives us an opportunity how to address it. I didn't know about it till I heard from it, from him, in, um, in their, in their constituency group. Um, so, um, if we can get heads up when things like this happen, I'd appreciate it. Um, secondly, um, if, if Chief Tucker could just give us an overview of what is being done about the firemen who sprayed the, um, activists with the hose, um, again, happened in Ward Five. Like many of us on council, we all saw the video, um, which is very disturbing, um, to us all. And, um, if we did get the press release from, um, uh, Lieutenant Serge Lash, um, but if the chief could, uh, touch on that and let us know where we are with that, um, it's not something that I, you know, I've got reporters calling because it happened in the ward again, um, and at Haven Arrest, but I, I would rather for the chief to be that focal point. These are his firemen and women, so if he could respond to that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, good evening, and I too have seen the video, uh, and I have to tell you, I was truly appalled by what I saw. This individual, the firefighter with the hose, has been put on administrative leave pending an internal investigation. And, uh, I can tell you that that type of behavior is unacceptable, and it will not be tolerated under any measure in the Akron Fire Department. So, uh, I am embarrassed, and I will, uh, take care of the situation once we complete our investigation.
Thank you so much, Chief Tucker, for that update. Councilman Malik.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just wanted to, um, react to State Representative Weinstein's statement that he brought in. Um, I think right here in the next two days is going to be the end of submissions for the conservation proposals for that Tiestrod property. And so, you know, over the coming months, I'm sure there'll be more discussion about that property, uh, whether to accept one of the conservation proposals or development proposals. I think, uh, definitely the Woodridge, uh, School District should be a part of those discussions. Uh, obviously, the tax abatement has an impact on them that they don't control and can have a significant financial impact on them. So I hope that, you know, I've discussed it with the superintendent previously, that I hope that they're at the table as part of those discussions. Uh, and then finally, I just want to say, uh, you know, I really appreciate, uh, Chief Tucker's, uh, you know, directness on this issue that happened with the firefighter over the weekend. Um, you know, the, the addressing it head-on and making sure that that person's held accountable, um, is, is what, you know, uh, the kind of leadership we, we all know that will come from Chief Tucker, so we really appreciate, or at least I appreciate that from my part. Can speak for him.
Thank you so much, Councilman Malik. Councilman Fusco.
Yeah, thank you, uh, President Somerville. Just, just briefly, I know many of us, uh, someone had brought up Ward One, um, and I know many of us on council have communicated with, uh, Mr. Swirsky over the past few months here several times. I can tell you this, I stop by his house probably twice a week, and we talk all the time. I can tell you people in zoning, in police, public service, nuisance control, all of these departments have communicated with Mr. Swirsky over the past several months. Uh, and, uh, zoning issues, I go, I go to Mr. Swirsky automatic, and we talk it through in terms of how we're going to proceed and, you know, thoughts on those things, as well as issues itself. Uh, we, we've, uh, he's, and I, like, I see a couple of my colleagues shaking their heads, I, I know he shared his thoughts with many of us on many issues. So, um, we're, we're doing the best we can to fill those big shoes, uh, but, and I know all of us are, uh, keeping Rich and his family in our prayers, um, but, um, just, just rest assured that, that, that all of us are, are doing well too, uh, we're doing our best to represent Ward One. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Fusco. Uh, before we- Before we adjourn, just a reminder to council members, that this Thursday at 5:30, we will have a joint board meeting with Akron School Board via Zoom. To the public, we want you to know that City Council will be live streaming that meeting from our website. So just a reminder, and the topic for the meeting will be Wi-Fi broadband here in the city of Akron. Is there anything else coming before council at this time? Councilman Fusco.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, and if there are no objections, meeting adjourned.
Concludes the live broadcast of Akron City Council. Margot Somerville, President of Council, presiding.